Yes, thank you. Last May, I had the invitation to eat lunch for a day at our schools. And I started off in Ingles and I ended up in Classical. And what I saw in the elementary schools is, and I think I ate with kindergarteners in Ingles, is they ate their food, they liked their food. The teachers are very hands-on, they couldn't open their food. So I think we need to make sure that if we're going to have our students eat independently, eat nutritionally, we have to provide them with a meal that is used as friendly. That was my first observation. The cafeteria workers, it was a flawless system. My kitchen does not run as smooth as the cafeterias across the city. It was flawless. The children were all engaged with how they ate their meals and went on to the middle school in secondary, I can make that brief, because they have ala pa. So they have choices. In our elementary schools, they have choices, but sometimes choices are in the classroom and they're rushed. And us adults make the choices. So we need to find a system that's better in our elementary schools. We have freshman going in, but we don't have, what you see wrapped around, I'd like nutrition to be wrapped around what the students are eating. If you want to prepare something that's new, can't we have all reliable from students so that we know they're eating? I know it can work. Donna and I have had a health policy made two, three, four times over the last several years that we've worked together. So we know ideas work. And honestly, Chatwell, who we have all voted unanimously to service our lunch programs, does maintain the requirements. They just have to be counted. The cliche of stepping out of the box and seeing how we can better appeal to the elementary school's children. Thank you, Patricia.
Our next question begins with Mary Amy. ESL, or English as a Second Language classes, are essential for new residents in order for them to achieve financial stability, be able to interact with their children's teachers, and become an integrated part of their community. Yet, Operation Bootstraps ESL program has a waiting list of over 800 people. And the Ford School's ESL program has had to turn away some parents of students as they are beyond classroom capacity. Want to propose to increase access to these programs to address this statewide need. You have two minutes.
That's a tough one. It was funny today, someone just mentioned that about Operation Bootstraps to me and that is a waiting list. Somebody, that was a teacher, was writing that Bootstraps at the dinner I went to for some time there. But I want you to know that we need to have a lot more wraparound zones. And by wraparound zones, I mean this. At the end of the day, people need to come into the buildings and be able to work with other people. The wraparound zone, one project they're doing, one pilot they're putting in, is that the parents come in, the teachers teach the parents, and the parents then can go home and help their children. I really don't know how to address this problem. It's such a large problem. It's not just here in Lynn. It's a problem all over the state of Massachusetts. It's the reason why they brought in the, it wasn't even an education problem, it was more like a state law, that we need to address this. And they're reteaching teachers, and they need to open up the doors, and they need to help people to learn how to speak their language, or English, and their language. But it is a huge problem.
Mr. Porter.
Well, two years ago, we opened up a night school with Dr. Charlie Gallow and myself running the committee. And we worked with the North Shore Labor Council. We knew there was an overabundance of candidates with Operation Bootstraps and they couldn't handle it. I think, obviously, this year we expanded to night school, local healthcare. But if there's a need, that we will serve that need down at Lynn Tech with the Night School program. I also think to make it more convenient, they should actually offer night school courses in the neighborhood schools, so that people don't have to travel and have problems getting from one part of the city to another. We'd go to their neighborhood schools and take these courses. But I really think we have an obligation to reach out and help the communication of the people in the city as best we can.
Just a moment, Stanley. Would you like to address this with the information that the ESL classes and the classes at Lynn Tech, as opposed to the first year, that was done with the New Lynn Coalition, they're now, if I just checked today, $50. And at least the majority of the youth beneath these classes have a 75% chance of being overpaid or higher. So $50 for $100, we want that.
And that is something we addressed right from the beginning. That was brought up by Jeff Broad, the North Shore Labor Council. And in some of the cases, I suggested a fee upfront that be reimbursed at the completion of the course. The only reason I suggested an upfront fee was because if the course has no value, then they might come when they want to come. But there should be no cost to someone that wants to take that course. Again, we suggested an upfront fee just to show that the program itself had some value and to get the people that come. But we've made a stipulation that anybody that came every week or almost every week should be fully reimbursed for the program.
Thank you, John. Stanley.
How many elementary schools? They said there was 17, 18. How many are most of the day? There is your space problem answer. And I don't know. There is a question of, you could use Title I money, I'm not sure that, I mean, you might have to argue really well with that, but you could use Title I money to pay for the teachers. And because there is a certain percentage of Title I money that has to be spent on that, 10%, I think it's about $600,000. But a little paying one teacher could teach 20 adults. And if the adults learn the language better, then they can read to their kids, they can help their kids with this. As for how well Tech is working, the waiting list is current, right? It's 1800 now, after they vote in Tech. So that alone is not the answer. We need more, and the cost is prohibitive. They shouldn't have to, they should just.
Mr. Stover.
Thank you. Dr. Crane and the Ford School's been, I guess, pioneers with ESL in the city of Lynn and addressing the needs of those that need to learn English. And as everybody well knows, Operation Bootstraps does a tremendous job, has a tremendous backlog. Now, we have some of the other schools, the Level Four schools, started offering ESL programs, as well as what was opened up in Tech. But I'm a member of Grace United Methodist Church on Broadway. And one of the things that the congregation wanted to do was find out what the community needs that they could help out with. And my church has contacted Operation Bootstraps, we have an educational English in classrooms in that facility, and now our rooms there have opened up a couple of nights a week running ESL programs. So it doesn't necessarily have to be done within our church buildings. There are many organizations that are within the city, you know, whether it's a faith-based organization or other, that would love to help. So what we need to do is involve more of the community in local, you know, somebody used the catchphrase, I think outside the box a little bit, but that's something that can definitely be done. There's a lot of space, a lot of open space every night of the week, and varied hours as well. I think Conery was doing their programs during the day because they knew a lot of the parents that needed that help were working during it, working at night. So there's many different ways that we can address it, but I think we need to expand on that a little bit as we solicit help.
Mr. Gallow.
Thank you. So I think we can all agree, education is first and foremost about the student, but it has to be also about the parent, and it has to be about the family, because parental involvement is so key, and family involvement is so key when we talk about providing a quality education here in Lynn. As I said earlier, I support the meeting programs, help with English, excuse me, English Language, help with GED, and help with job training for our parents and families. You mentioned Operation Bootstraps. My friend Anne Carrigan, who's the board of directors, president at Operation Bootstraps, she and her husband rent office space to me, and set up a couple of weeks ago a meeting with Anne and with the superintendent. So I think coming to a Lynn item story near you in the next couple of weeks, you'll see Operation Bootstraps in our schools, which is great. Again, with John Ford, I worked on opening up Lynn Tech at night, worked with the New Lynn Coalition and the North Shore Labor Council to offer various educational and training opportunities there at night. And I do want to say that John Ford's really been a champion of keeping the costs down at that program. It's not free to open up a school at night, we have to cover the costs somehow. John has really advocated to bring costs down in the various programs. On the early literacy program, we have a grant writer trying to help us bring that cost down so that students can go in and get help with their early literacy needs at little to no cost. I think we need to keep continuing to offer those programs and keep trying to fund them in ways to make it affordable for everyone. Thank you.
Ms. Karpal.
Yes, my boss always has been, he always was meaning to have our school building to be open for us, to address the issues that we have as parents, as a community resident in that city. We need to address those issues because we see parents that they want to be involved. How do you expect a parent to be involved if they don't speak the language? How do you expect somebody to be involved with education, achieving? If they are not able even to communicate with teachers? We need more community schools, as Ford School, as everybody says. And people can be mentioned, that Lynn Tech with the education program, I'm talking about I am the chair of the New Lynn Coalition. And we decide that many parents, as Wendy says, can't afford to pay $100, cannot afford to pay $75, $50. And we paid for them as a New Lynn Coalition. We paid to parents to attend the little class that was for six weeks, and it's not enough. We need a school to be open. And yes, we should involve the politicians, all official elects should be involved, because a city who has no education, parents who have no education, and are not able to help the students, the city is never going to progress. So we should involve the politicians in these issues in our city. They are part of the solution also, and they want us to vote for them. I have to say that working with Ford School is amazing, a business, it's a process to the church. And you said, I am also a member of Operation Bootstraps, and yes, the school should make a partnership with Operation Bootstraps, because they know better how to address those issues about English as a second language, and also GED. Thank you.
Mrs. Romaniela.
There's so many answers to this question. First of all, I think it would be important to find out where our biggest areas of needs are, as far as where the most numbers of parents who are looking for ESL services target those areas. I think we will need more community partnerships. We have a huge academy here in Lynn that is full of only space for volunteers. I'm thinking, Rick mentioned the churches, not just the churches, but we have the Huns' after-school program for our kids, everything, boys and girls, with Salvation Army, the Lions Day, the Great House, World's Aiming Center for. All of those places have space. Maybe they could donate the space, maybe we could donate the volunteers. Maybe we organize it and form these collaborations and form our parents, and we get the volunteers from somewhere else. My best friend was at GE, and he was telling me about an email that went around, all the GE employees looking for volunteers in the school. Do you know only two schools ask for volunteers from GE? Two, Druids and Kip. We're not collaborating enough with our community, we're not asking them for help, we're not partnering with them enough. We have the space, we have the people we can take care of this. We even have the funds. Title I money. A lot of schools use their Title I money for reading specialists, librarians. They get to choose where their money goes. Schools like the Ford School, and I saw Dr. Crane walking around, so if I'm correct if I'm wrong, Dr. Crane, but she actually eliminated one position here at the school to fund after-school programs as far as the night school goes. We could do that too. We could utilize money that we wouldn't necessarily think would be available. Again, I think it's going to take collaboration, and we'll need to work together to find the money, to find the space, to find the teachers. Thank you.
Mrs. Capone.
Yes, thank you. I was sitting here, thinking quickly, and I'm thinking of private character Ingles and Ford, just off the top of my head, and they all sound like they're communities that are immersed, school communities that are immersed in a certain language, in so several language barriers. But those schools are running ESL programs for parents, and I think someone had mentioned they are being run at community times for parents. We have, I've worked a volunteer program over the summer over at Centerwood, and they too are running ESL programs, morning, noon, and night. I think what we need to do, we have United Way, they too are running, collaborating with other nonprofits. There are over 20 nonprofits in the city that are willing and capable of running ESL classes. It's not, it's what we need to do is take the three programs I mentioned, two programs mentioned to the left, three programs mentioned to the right, and somehow let people know, even if it's on fire, that goes to every school in need where these programs are. Because I know I sat there all summer, and those programs were not filled. So we need to reach out, and maybe it's a school year that parents might need, but with the programs there, we want people to know those programs. We want the community to get together and reach out to our parents, because it'll be said all night, our parents are the first target. Your children are yours. We want you to be the lead educator. So if you can speak the language, we are finally dependent on that, then you are to be dependent on that. It's a partnership, that language cannot be our first barrier. So an ESL program in schools is something that schools are willing. And if it's not in a certain school, then we as a committee need to know which school probably should host one.
Thank you, Mrs. Capone. Mrs. Capone.
This subject is dear to me. My mother's parents and all of their children came from Poland many, many years ago. And I remember, my grandfather went out to work, so it was easier for him to pick up the English language than my grandmother, who stayed home. And she really struggled with it. So I know it was difficult, and we don't want anybody here to have that same problem. All these services should be here for the parents who want to go out and learn the English. Number one, there should be no fee or any cost to be able to have English as a second language classes at all. Another agency that wasn't mentioned is New America inside the Wood Building, and they also have ESL classes. But, you know, the other thing is, I think it is the school department's responsibility. And I know that, you know, we need to change the mindset of some of our administrators who do not think that it is that important to offer the ESL. And that started, you know, at the talk with the superintendent. She, you know, has been struggling here when Dr. Crane has used that Title I money for those classes. But that Title I money, when you use it to educate the parents and help them along so they can help their kids, is a good use of money. And I think that it's really important that she be able to continue using your Title I money for them, as well as, we talked to other principals, who parents need them in the school, and they also need them.
Thank you, Donna. In the interest of time, we've been asked to go straight to closing remarks. Now we begin our closing remarks. We'll begin our closing remarks with Maria Carasco, and continue from left to right. Maria, you have two minutes.
Well, we are here to ask you for your vote. You're going to vote for the person that you believe is a team. We need six people. We have nine people running for school committee. It's a team, I ask you, please. I love what I'm doing. I believe that all the children, regardless of background, if they are poor, average, what color they are, doesn't matter, they deserve quality of education. And all the schools should have the resources that they need for those students. I believe in community school, I ask you, please, November 5th, go to vote and cut one of those six votes for Maria Carasco. I really enjoy what I'm doing, I want to continue. I believe that we are always flexible, open-minded, able to hear any advices, if you believe that a concern is wrong, my phone number is there, my flyer, my cellphone number, so everything, they are very flexible. I don't believe that I have all the answers, but I love what I'm doing. And I ask you, please, cut one of those six votes for Maria Carasco. Thank you. John.
Thank you very much, everyone. Again, thank you to the Highlands Coalition and Ford School, Wendy for moderating, Dr. Crane with the course. And again, thank you to everybody who came tonight, whether you're here to learn about the candidates, or whether you're here working for a candidate, you should be commended for being informed voters, you should be commended for being part of the process. And thank you also to anyone who's watching online or on television. Again, my name is Charlie Gallo. I started my first term on the school committee in 2012. I'm running for a second term. And I ran first because of how important education is to me. I was first with my family to go to college. After college, I went to law school and returned to the classroom, started teaching at North Shore Community College as an adjunct instructor, which I currently do now. I want to continue working hard for our students, I want to continue working hard for our schools, and continue working hard to improve education here in Lynn. Again, my name is Charlie Gallo. On November 5th, I will be number four on the ballot, and I respectfully ask for one of your six votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for the opportunity to address you tonight. Since I've been elected four years ago, currently seeking my third term, I've become known as an advocate for parents, for students. Nothing makes me feel better than being able to help a parent. So frustrated, feeling they have no place else to turn, that they can pick up the phone, make a couple of calls, reach out, and hopefully get a resolution to their problems. Aside from all the typical roles and responsibilities that a school committee member must perform on a daily basis, that gives me the most satisfaction. I've had a great experience on the Lynn School Committee in my past two terms, working not only with all of the people that I've served with, but meeting such great people that have taken the time to put their hats in the ring and run for elected office. It's been a pleasure to work with all the community groups and get to meet so many people, and I hope that I can continue to do that for at least two more years. Come November 5th, I'm number one on the ballot, so it's easy to find. And again, I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Stanley.
Yeah, I started a little over three years ago going to the school committee meetings, and thanks to suggestions from Dr. Latham, I started a blog, Lynn School Watch. I've had over 305,000 views in that time. I, you know, have nothing else to do, I do this full-time because I'm retired. You'll probably see me over the next couple of weeks walking around, this connected with my one son, to my son Nate. I don't want to contribute as soon as I'm up, having no fundraisers, because I want to give an objective voice, an objective view to what's going on in our schools. On November 5th, I'd like one of your six votes. Thank you very much.
John.
I am a candidate for reelection to my seventh term on the Lynn School Committee. I take the position very seriously, and I firmly believe that every child in Lynn is equally entitled to the best educational opportunity that we can provide in a safe and welcoming environment. Over the past three years as chairman of building and grounds, I have been part of an effort with the state building authority to retain funding for a new Marshall Middle School, where we will soon be breaking ground for that new school. We have a new Pickering School in the MSBA pipeline, and I hope that this is the start of an accelerated build plan for several new badly needed schools. Last week, Mr. Gallo and I were in Pickering with State Treasurer Grossman, assessing that school for replacement. I have a master's degree in education and over 30 years' business management experience as my qualification as a school committee member. I also have two daughters that are Lynn teachers who keep me aware of what's happening in the system. I think that the current committee would all agree that the Lynn schools are doing well. Conery and Harrington were just upgraded to Level Three status, we have no Level Four schools in Lynn. Classical in Lynn Woods achieved Level One status, we now have six schools at Level One status. Of the nine commissioners we have in the district, Lynn ranks number one in ESL and science, and number two in math. I think these are major accomplishments in a very diverse school system of over 14,000 students. But we have issues. We have a critical need for classroom space. This is what necessitated the move of the kindergarten and commercial street. The shortage of space makes it very difficult to add new teachers, reduce class size, and this includes much-needed features in school libraries. If I am elected, my primary motivator will be to seek out additional facilities for classroom use and to ensure reasonable class size. Number three on the ballot, please send me one of your votes.
Lauren.
Hi, my name is Lauren Daly, and I'm running for Lynn Public School Committee. And I'm doing this because I just retired from Pickering Middle School as a lead teacher in science. I've taught in Lynn Public Schools for 33 years. I want to represent the teachers, the students, the parents, because I have been one of all of them here in Lynn Public Schools. There's nobody here that hears more than about the students than me, and I have several students out here that know that. I will work my butt off for you, I will work so hard, I will find solutions to the problems that were brought to us today. I would like to see more respect between the super school committee principals and teachers. That's what I would really like. I run my classroom that way. Everybody shows respect for one another. We care about one another, we show respect for one another, and we put our hand up when one another needs help. And that's what I would like to see for Lynn Public Schools. I want it to be like my students in my classroom call my classroom Gayfies World. I want to see Lynn Public Schools as a place of respect, where everyone is going to learn. So you have trusted me for 33 years with your child. Please trust me with one of your six votes on November 5th. And I'm number five, think about it, five, five, you know, that five-dollar thing, foot long, I'm number five on the ballot, so please vote for me.
Thank you, Lauren.
Donna. My name is Donna Capola, and I would like one of your six votes to send me back to the school committee. I want to say first that you've been an excellent audience. I cannot believe how still you have sat for all of this, and I appreciate it. My daughter teaches here at Ford, and she tells me the kids here at Ford are fantastic. They're well behaved, they come here to learn, and Dr. Crane expects that of them and expects
They come here to learn, and Dr. Crane expects that of them and expects a lot from the teachers. So I must say, as I see that you all sitting like this, I understand now that my daughter says, you know, the apple doesn't fall far from the tree. So your kids are a good example of you. The important thing is, if you send me back, I will, in every school committee meeting as I have for the last number of years, I'll ask the tough questions at the table. I won't be afraid to ask them. I won't be afraid to get answers for you. And I think it's an important thing. And I want you to send to this school committee when we meet in January, get sworn in, a group of people that are going to work really hard for your kids. Thank you. Just don't forget me. Thank you.
Patricia.
Thank you again. Thank you for hosting this evening and thank you for meeting the audience that we work with. Thank you for taking time and energies to listen to us as candidates for school committee. Ultimately, my mission is to be part of a committee whose goal is to continuously improve your students' social, cultural, and academic achievements and to provide all students with skills, knowledge, and experience to achieve success as young adults. I want Lynn community to raise students to be quality adults. 16 years ago, when I ran, my mission and my passion hasn't changed. I entered the school committee race because I was an advocate for my son. My son entered because he had lots of needs. He had medical needs. He had academic needs. But that hasn't changed for me. I know very well, small struggles and great games to be our students. I have had the vision. I have had the experience of good committees. I've had committees that have worked together. I have committees that have been polarized. I have been able to orchestrate staying in the middle of the committee. I can be a voice of reason. I am well versed in the needs of the Lynn Public School system. I am well versed in the needs of our buildings and what quality education looks like. I ask you to please send me back as a candidate for Lynn School Committee this election. Thank you.
Melissa.
My name is Melissa Romanello, and I'm lucky number seven on the ballot. And I want all of your votes. I want your vote. I want your mom's vote. I want your dad's vote. Your brothers, your sisters, all your friends. I cannot wait to be sitting on the school committee. I've seen Donna Capola asking the hard questions. You think she asks the hard questions? You ain't seen nothing yet. I got to sit on the budget hearing, and I saw Donna ask Kevin McHugh, where did you come up with that figure? Why is that in there? Kevin goes, that's what I was told to put in there. That's not going to fly next year. We're not going to keep doing this year after year after year. I watched the school committee take $250,000 away from special education and give it to make new administrative jobs. Want to talk about money for ESL? Want to talk about money for reading programs, librarians, reading specialists? Our administration is sitting in a school building. Our administration is sitting in classrooms. They have chalkboards in their offices. Enough is enough. I want to be your fourth vote. Not just your vote, everyone you know's vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Now, I think I speak for everyone here who gave their time to come speak to you. Please vote on November 5th. Thank you again to our hosts at the Ford School. The candidates and I thank you all for coming. All the students can go up to their classroom. This is Wendy Joseph of the Highlands Coalition.